All right, good evening everyone. This is regular meeting, right?
Yes.
Okay, good evening. I'd like to welcome you and open this regular meeting of the Board of Selectmen for Tuesday, October fifteenth, twenty nineteen. Please rise, join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
One quick housekeeping thing before we go on. Oh, no, it's there. I thought there was something missing, but no, we have it on here. Okay, great. First order of business, correspondence, anything breaking? Okay, public comments? Everybody here is pretty much on the agenda, so I doubt there'd be comments. Next order of business is approval of the regular minutes of September seventeenth, twenty nineteen. I'll adjointate a motion to approve.
I'll make the motion.
Okay, are there any questions, comments, corrections? All right, hearing none. Those in favor?
Aye.
That motion carries. First LECW's report, I don't have a lot of new stuff to report. Paving is underway at Knollwood, Governor's Lane, intersection up there. One of the things they did is narrow the roadway somewhat. It's still pretty wide, but it provides a little bit more lawn space for the neighbors, but it was originally designed up there to have a circle, traffic circle, which was never put in, but that's why when you go up and you get to the intersection of, I think it's Spring Hill, it's wider than an average expressway, so that's been straightened around. It should slow down traffic quite a bit, too. Aside from that, there's just routine things going on. CCM, I'm a board member of Connecticut Conference of Municipalities. We are beginning our annual legislative planning session. CCM lobbies the state legislature every year for, well, for changes in laws that would help municipalities, or at least to stop passing laws that hurt municipalities, you know, like unfunded mandates, things like that. That process got underway, and as we go through those things, I will keep you guys informed. Also, I would like to inform my colleagues, the annual CCM convention is December third, and you are welcome to and highly encouraged to attend. It's held at Foxwoods every year. A lot of people make a night out of it, you know, which is on your own, of course, but it's a very, very informative, all-day session. The seminars, the instructional seminars that CCM provides are extremely helpful. I have found that the educational materials are very useful, you know, and I apply directly to the job all the time. So, wanted to make you guys aware of that because, of course, we do have an election in the meantime, assuming we're still here. We will, you know, I would like to invite you to that. I would also invite Board of Finance and Planning and Zoning members, because it is, there's a lot of educational materials that they could benefit from as well. That's it. Do you guys have any other comments? Nope. Nope, all right. Moving on, first order of business is consideration of refunds as a result of overpayment of taxes, so I'll put a motion on the floor that we authorize repayment of taxes, refunds, in the amount of seven thousand two hundred and twenty dollars and ninety-two cents, as recommended by the tax collector, Ann Stanko, dated October fifteenth, twenty nineteen. And the documentation shows basically overpayment, mostly on vehicles and things like that. Any questions?
Nope.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Hearing no further comments, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Item number two, consideration of Parloa Playground Equipment. This was anticipated in the annual capital budget. It was, as you guys know, in the budget process, it was removed from the capital list and put into the operating budget, budget on the capital non-recurring. And there is a line for it, although we do have to go through, you don't have to go through a town meeting, but we do have to go through Board of Finance to release those funds. And we are, I wasn't gonna do this till later, because it can't be installed until the spring, anyway. However, if we move this along now, there is a grant available that offsets the cost by fourteen, well, over fourteen thousand dollars, and I'd like to turn the floor over to Eileen Earl so she can explain what the equipment she wants to buy and how the grant works.
Basically, the grant is through Game Time Equipment, and it's a percentage off based on how much you purchase. So, if it's a certain amount, it can be thirty percent, forty percent, or fifty percent, based on what we wanna do, which is replacing both playground equipments that are there, because originally, we were just gonna do one piece, but with this savings, we can do both pieces, and we feel that both pieces are needed to be replaced. And this is the company that we had at McCower, the equipment, and here are some color pictures. They might give you a better idea of what we're doing, but if you're looking at the playground, this would be like if your back is to South Street, and this is the, replacing the big equipment and then the smaller piece. And then we thought in time, we would put picnic tables in between and make it one big wood carpet, you know, safety, take out the very ordinary around. And then these are just up and close pictures of the actual equipment, and this is the color scheme that we would like to have there, which is nice and bright, and...
This is all white PVC?
It's metal piping and plastic, very similar to what's there, just upgraded. And we made sure that if we took out slides, we replaced it with the same amount of slides, because that seems to be popular with older kids. It has this little rock climbing wall, which is good, and it added different features in the toddler. This is a two- to five-year-old playground, and this is five to twelve. The other thing we also did, we have no tubes in any of the play structure. It's all open, so it's very visible for parents to watch their kids, as well as Parloa Park, there's no tubes for people to hide in. So, that's been a safety issue, and we've had some vandalism and different things in there, yeah. I don't wanna go into details, but...
These railings here, you can't get your head?
Nope, this would all meet the certified playground inspection. It would get installed by my staff and a local contractor, but you can't open a playground until it gets to be certified by a certified playground. All wood chips, what we presently use now as well. I just thought there was an opportunity for us to get updated equipment. The equipment that's at Parloa is probably like twenty-five years old and was done by the J.C.'s back then, and this will replace both pieces, and we could really add to, so Parloa is a feature.
Eileen, and this one picture of the stairs, the other stairs has spindles on it, but this stairs doesn't. Can you just double check on that, because it probably should have spindles on this? That's the back page. The higher one has the spindles, but I'm sure that requires spindles.
This one here?
It looks different than that.
It's the toddler one.
Is this the older kid one?
That's the older kid one. This is the toddler one. This is it.
Yes, see here, just check with ADA or the building inspector, make sure that that doesn't require spindle, spindle like the other stairs does.
Yeah, but this is probably the handrail to get up.
I understand that, but kids can go through there.
Okay.
Versus this.
Yep, yep.
Eileen, basically, this represents what, roughly about a twenty-nine percent discount, right?
Yes, it's almost a thirty percent discount that we are able to get.
Not bad.
So... It's also part of, and I have copies for you to give for you to, but it's the copy of the master plan that the commission approved at their last meeting in September, which we've gone to planning and zoning, and I'm giving you copies to review, so you guys could approve it at your next meeting.
The Mylona McBroom Plan, right?
Yes, and that, the part of their, the recommendation is to replace the playground equipment at.
What was our, what was in the budget for this?
I had thirty-two thousand, and it's a thirty-five, so...
Yes. Okay, do you guys have any other questions?
No. Just an opportunity with a grant like that.
Yep. Yeah, it's grant, it's basically the sales incentive, but we'll take it.
The ones gonna use the company, like, they're the ones that have been designing it throughout the years. The original quote was from this company as well, so...
Okay, all right, I'll put a motion on the floor that we approve the game time proposal to replace playground equipment at Parloa Park in the amount not to exceed thirty-five thousand nine hundred and forty-five dollars and sixty-six cents, and forward to Board of Finance for their review and approval. Any further conversation? Hearing none, those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, that carries. Eileen, we'll have, I know that this says, we have to actually place the order by the end of October.
We just have to have the signed contract, like, I have this sent to them, so...
I'll talk to you, yeah, I'll talk to you about that tomorrow, because we might have to ask a couple of, enough of, enough Board of Finance members to come and move that along, because this is, this is in the capital non-recurring budget, so it shouldn't be a problem. All right, thank you very much. Moving on to item number three, consideration of a fire truck. Didn't you guys just get a fire truck?
We just delivered you one, right? Or is it here?
It's here.
It's here. It fit.
Oh, did you drive it out? Did you drive it out?
No.
Oh, okay. Okay, so, we know that this is coming up. You guys gave us some information. We have some test reports. I will be very honest with you. I have not had time to look through this. You know, we've got the NFPA standards, so basically, what I wanted to do is have an, have an opportunity for my colleagues and I to just ask questions about the specs for what you need, the timelines, what the longer-range plans are, that kind of thing. So, let me, let me start out and ask you this. The current, the current drivetrain and chassis is ten years, it's like eleven years old, right? Okay, what kind of shape is that in?
That's in good shape. That we maintain. Every year it's out, you know.
Let me throw another curve on that one there, too. Now, that includes the pump behind it, too, that chassis?
Yeah. We did, we had transmission.
I had, in the past fourteen months, I had transmission problems that had to be addressed. I had motor problems that had to be addressed. I had multiple issues with the air that had to be addressed. And it's, you know, it's something that's expected with a truck of that age, but it's at that age where it's experiencing more and more of those, those wear and tear issues.
Well, what were the motor and transmission things? Because I come from Detroit, so I understand a lot of this.
There was an issue with the, with the electronic transmission not shifting properly.
Okay, that's a, that's computer, then?
The computer had to, the computer had to get replaced. There was an issue with the interface between the transmission and the motor for the jake brake. That required, excuse me, that required more electrical repairs. The air brake system, the air dryer's been replaced three times. The air compressor's been replaced once. The air governor's been replaced twice, and I've had, I've had so far, two of my ABS sensors have gone bad. We had to replace all of them, because they were all the same age, so they were all subject to the same problem. That's, that's the past fourteen months with that, with that powertrain.
But, you know, if you compare it to routine maintenance, that's all part of it for a chassis of that size, I would say, because, you know, trucks like that, you know, you do run into those problems.
Right, for, right, for a vehicle that age and older, that's something that you, that you expect to run into, but we're in that time period right now.
Was that truck sized properly for the ladder at the time?
At the time, yes.
At the time?
How wide the size of that ladder?
That ladder is a, it has a ninety-foot reach.
Okay, what's wrong with the, you know, I've been hearing all sorts of rumors. The rumors I've been hearing is pneumatics or hydraulics. Also, I've heard that there's stress on the ladder itself.
So, what caused it to fail its annual inspection this year, because it's failed two years in a row, what caused it to fail this year is the hydraulic valve body, which is the part of the hydraulic system that operates the aerial device. It's bypassing fluid, so when the controls to lift and lower the ladder and extend and retract the ladder, when you let go of them, they're supposed to return to the neutral position and stop the movement of the ladder. They're not doing that. So, along with that, there was a violent vibration that developed within the turntable of the device. The aerial boom mounts to a turntable, which is what allows the boom to spin three hundred and sixty degrees. The turntable mounts to the chassis. So, this vibration is starting to cause wear on the hydraulic swivel within the turntable mount. The hydraulic swivel hasn't been made, that model has not been made since the mid-nineties, and the valve body itself has not been made since the mid-nineties. At that point, when the manufacturer was updating their designs, that's when they stopped making it. They haven't been able to get those parts. They tried piecing together, they tried the solution of piecing together parts of a, of a new valve body with old components and vice versa to make it work last year, when we failed last year. They were unsuccessful doing that. The best combination of parts that they could come up with, it still has a violent vibration. They told us when they gave us the truck back after having it for six weeks, this is as good as it's gonna be. We don't know what's wrong with it. We can't figure out why.
This was Suffin?
This was Suffin.
Are there any independent repair centers that specialize in this kind of apparatus that you could get another opinion?
So, there is one in Connecticut. It's called Five Star. They're up in East Hartford. They are actually the, they are territorially the Suffin Service Center for this part of Connecticut and a couple of surrounding states.
So, they're, they're like a, they're an authorized Suffin center?
Yeah, it's like they're part of the Suffin franchise. They are, they were our primary service center, as anything Suffin related gets diverted to them. Because of the poor service that we were receiving there with both this truck and Engine Five, which we took delivery of about five years ago, we had to go through a whole, a whole proceedings with the Suffin Corporation to get ourselves legally removed from our obligation to deal with Five Star.
Oh, you mean, so you were, guys were going to Five Star, but they were not performing?
They were not performing, the, the quality of their work and the time that it took to do it were creating problems for us.
And they're the only?
And they're the, they are the, they are the authorized dealer and service center in Connecticut. So, when we contacted Suffin Corporate and said, "This isn't working. We need a better solution," they made up a contract, if you will, saying that we can deal directly with the Suffin East Plant, which is out in Pennsylvania. And so, now that requires the truck to get driven three hours out to Pennsylvania, three hours back, so we lose a whole day in travel for that.
A lot of miles, too.
A lot of miles and fuel, which they bill us for. There's a copy of, there's a copy in that information they gave you with all the service records, and one of the things is that they bill us for the fuel for driving the truck back here for us, the last time it was out there. They seem to have the same problems with fixing or even addressing any, any repairs in a timely manner. They don't reply to emails. They don't reply to phone calls. The truck was out there for six weeks in the beginning of the last calendar year. It took them a month to return any of my phone calls regarding the status of the truck, and I told them, I said, "I don't want it done fast. I want it done right, but logistically, I need an idea of how long these repairs are gonna take. Are we talking a week? Are we talking two months? I just need to know, so we can plan for our operations." And they said, "We've never, we've never had to perform this type of repair. We really don't know."
So, why do we deal with Suffin?
And that, and that was the reason that we stopped dealing with them, the Engine Six projects that we just took delivery of. We switched manufacturers because of all these.
Why would you switch to Brewster?
Uh, we're buying Seagrave now, and their service center is right over in Brewster, New York, and it's been a day and night difference with the service that we receive, both from Hudson Valley Fire and from the Seagrave factory.
So, there's no other independent contractor or service people that can work on that hydraulic system?
Other than Five Star?
Other, well, either Five Star or the, or the company in Pennsylvania.
Our options right now is the manufacturer at their satellite facility in Pennsylvania or going back to Five Star.
Why?
Well, neither, you didn't have good results with either one of them. I wouldn't even recommend go back to either one of them.
My concern now is, is trying to find, you know, even if I could find a, you know, another fire apparatus mechanic that's willing to work on it, the parts that they need, just they aren't available, because we went to the manufacturer themselves to try to have the work done, and they're saying the reason that it can't be done is because we haven't made the parts since the mid-nineties.
A lot of the issue with that truck, that was the first time a refurbished was tried with a Suffin. Tom Suffin did it himself out in what was called Tom's Toy Box in Ohio. Nothing was ever written down. That truck, when, when Tom Suffin passed away, the truck passed away with him, because everything was in his head on how that truck was built. He never wrote anything down.
Really?
The Pennsylvania.
You pay a million bucks for a truck and they don't have an actual plan?
He had no, it was the first time they tried it.
The Pennsylvania facility that was trying to work on our truck said that they had to consult the main plant out in Ohio, where this whole project was done twelve years ago, and they found in dealing with the Ohio plant that there was no, no schematics for the vehicle. There was no mapping of hydraulic lines, no list of parts and components. It was, you know, it was one of the first ones ever done, and it was, there was no record keeping, so there's nothing for, there's nothing for anybody to try to go and research now to find out anything about it. You know, we have, we have an owner's manual pertaining to the powertrain, the cab and chassis, because that was manufactured as a new piece of equipment. So, I have those owner's manuals, but pertaining to the, the work that was done to made up the old and new parts, there's absolutely nothing in print or on a computer to reference, and the only thing I have for a owner's manual and a parts manual for the forty-two-year-old portion is a, you know, approximately fifteen-page, you know, typewriter document from the late seventies when that was originally built. There's no thorough information on it.
There's nothing connecting the two pieces.
Is the valve body on the, on the refurbished truck, or is the valve body stuff on the ladder?
It's on the, it's in the turntable.
It's the, it's the turntable portion of the.
So, that was, that was with the ladder?
That's all, that all got transferred over.
To the ladder, so that was, that was new on the truck?
When the remount was done, you know, and, you know, if you look at some other manufacturers, you know, there's a few out there that will remount a ladder. It's generally not an accepted practice. There's a couple of manufacturers that will do it, not necessarily with a Suffin, but they'll do it with their own brand, and they'll reuse the, the aerial boom portion and the bucket, but the hydraulics get replaced in their entirety, so everything from the PTO pump, the hydraulic reservoir, all the lines, all the pistons, they're all brand-new, and the only thing that you're truly reusing is the big piece of metal that makes up your boom.
So, basically, you're rebuilding it as new?
Right.
From some other manufacturer?
Right, and, and so, for example, the aerial scope brand, they will take your old aerial scope ladder boom and remount it, but it has all new components on it, and it's completely certified to the most current standard, the most current NFPA standards. This ladder, when it was done, and I didn't have a lot of involvement with the project back then, so I don't know what the reason was that we didn't replace hydraulics back then, but I still have original hydraulic cylinders on this vehicle that have been subject to repairs. I've got original hydraulic hoses on it. So, this ladder never got upgraded to the current standard. It doesn't have any of the electrical safeties built into it that the standard requires. The standard says that it's supposed to have an interlock system. Any aerial device has to have an interlock system that does a couple of things safety-wise. One, it won't let you operate the aerial device unless the stabilizer jacks are properly set. This truck still operates today the way it did forty years ago, where it doesn't have that.
So, you can extend the ladder without having to stabilize it?
Without your jacks set up.
Which is dangerous.
Which is dangerous. You wouldn't, you know, intentionally go and do that, but, you know, if you didn't properly stabilize it, you know, your jacks might be out and down, but if you didn't put enough weight on them, you could tip the truck over. So, the electronic interlocks are supposed to prevent that.
They have sensors in them?
Yeah.
Okay.
Additionally, there's, this interlock system stops you from lowering the boom down and crushing the cab. If you were, if you had the ladder spun around one hundred and eighty degrees and you're operating over the front of the truck, it'll stop the ladder from crushing the cab. It'll stop the ladder from crushing the fire body on the side of the truck if you're operating at a low angle. The truck never got any of those updates, so it never was, it never was compliant.
But in the past forty-two years, since we had the truck, you never crashed or tipped it over?
There's some damage on the roof where it's gotten, it's tapped a couple of times. Thankfully, you know, we never had a significant incident where, where it was in danger of tipping over. It has struck the cab a couple of times, which, you know, but, yeah, so this was truly just a, we're gonna take this old part here and put it on this new part here, and none of the applicable updates were ever done.
So, you know, let me just go back to your original statement here.
Sure.
There's other manu, repair facilities, but they're not Suffin, you're saying?
Right.
And could basically put new hydraulics on the thing, current specs, okay, whatever safety mechanisms you want onto this chassis. And the question is, at this time, what are these types' anticipated costs? And the question comes down to, maybe it's best to put the whole mechanism, the hydraulics, in the ladder.
So, the last time we looked into it was in preparation for this past year's budget presentation, and the Suffin Corporation told us at that point, they said, "One, we don't recommend it. It's something that, when Tom Suffin was still alive and he owned the company, that was something that he experimented with. There was a handful of them done, but it's not something that we regularly do, and we don't recommend it." For, basically, because of the issues that we're running into with this. They said, "They said you constantly run into roadblocks with matching old and new." They said that if you really wanna do it, it'll cost you somewhere in the neighborhood of seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars to, to do that.
To put a new ladder on the?
To put a new ladder on it.
And the hydraulics.
The problem at that point is for that truck, and they won't give you the truck back unless the entire truck, bumper to bumper, top to bottom, is NFPA compliant. They have to take the truck portion of it, the cab and chassis and powertrain, and make that compliant to the new standard as well. So, the newest nineteen oh-one and nineteen eleven standards have been significantly updated with a lot of safety things, like NFPA, they identify what size seats you have to have for our crews to sit in, because of the size of a firefighter in their gear with an air pack behind them. They have to have seats of a certain size. Seat belts have to be longer. Basically, this is the entire inside of the cab has to get overhauled. So, you're stripping the whole cab down to a shell and replacing everything and using a twelve-year-old shell. The entire electrical system has to be updated to go through, it has to have a, the new multiplex system to operate everything electronic. The vehicles on the computer, if you will, that operate, that's the brain of the truck. This truck doesn't have the newest version of that, so that has to get updated. So, you know, anything powertrain-related that's not compliant to current standards has to get updated. So, by the time you're done with that project, you've basically replaced... So by the time you're done with that project, you've basically replaced. Everything except the walls of your cab and your frame rails and your motor. So the, you know, so the last time we looked into that, they said, you're looking at a year to do that project. And at that time, seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars. And they said, and, and with that said, we really don't wanna take on that project.
That was something.
That was something.
Now, uh, I, I, I don't know how you feel about it, but just me sitting right here, I'd like to get some other third party. And, because I've gone on the internet, when I first heard about this, uh, there are places that, I'm sure you know about them too, Pennsylvania, Ohio. Uh, and even out west, they'll totally retrofit it, they says we can do anything relative to hydraulics and ladders. The question is, how much is it gonna cost?
Right, and the concern that comes with that is that they, while they might mechanically be able to do the work to the truck. You don't have the factory support to fall back on down the road if there's a problem.
At, at this point, I wouldn't have any confidence in Sutfin whatsoever.
Right, and that's, and, and quite honestly, that's why we stopped buying them with our last purchase. But, uh, so there might be a, a fire truck mechanic or, you know, or, you know, service center that would take on a project like that. But with it not being a major manufacturer, if you have an issue with any part of that truck, five years, ten years down the road. They're not a major manufacturer, so are they still in business, what abilities do they have, what kinda? What kind of factory support can they get if they need parts down the road? That, those are all the, the concerns with, with taking on a project like that.
And also with going as far as Midwest, how are we gonna get it back and forth if they don't have someplace around here they can service it? I, I know, I, I'm, I'm just looking at the broad picture right now.
You gotta do the due diligence on, on every aspect, yeah.
And, you know. My last conversation with Sutfin, he was, he was gonna look and see if they had a truck from the, uh, mid nineties that they could harvest parts from. And I'm like, that's. You're not a three further.
That was the best option they could come up with, yeah.
And I, I work in Westport, and we have the same truck that we have here, same vintage, I think it's a year or two newer. Basically a sister truck to this, and we have all the same issues.
Really?
Exactly the same, same issues with the hydraulics. And ours has been updated to some of the newer safety features, and it still has the issues. And, you know, at work, we, same thing, no, uh, no records of any of the work was done to it, no wiring.
How, how, how do they comply with federal regulations?
Well, they didn't, that was, that's what we're learning. We, I, I reached out to my contact at Sutfin East, which is their satellite facility in Pennsylvania. And, uh, I've had pretty good luck getting answers from their service manager. Um, but he's also told me, you know, in, in dealing with him, he said, I wish I could come up with something better for you, I just, because. That there's no answers from the factory, we're trying to make this up as we go, he, you know, he's been good about trying to make us whole, but. Uh, when I spoke with him about the thought of reusing the truck and getting a new ladder, he said, he said, I'm not the guy to talk to about that. Here's the contact information for, um, someone out at the main plant in Ohio, they would have the answer. So I, in, in that packet that I gave you, I, uh, I had a printout of the email that I sent out to Ohio. And I asked them some, some technical questions about, are you, you know. What would the, i- is it possible to do it, is it something that the company is willing to take on? Uh, what's the cost associated with it, uh, what's the timetable, will it completely comply with the current NFPA standard? Uh, is there any opportunity to put a different sized ladder on the truck? Because they do manufacture some different size and style ladders now that, you know, that would benefit this town. Uh, having one of those different aerial devices, the question is, will it made up with that chassis? And, um, so I sent that email to him, he didn't reply, I've tried calling him three times, he won't reply. So that's what we're getting from, from them.
It, it, you know, from what you're saying, it's really not a cost effective to even touch that truck.
Yeah, right.
I mean, you gotta retrofit everything, the cab, you know, and then you still got the old chassis and the old.
Right, so.
So when, when you were here in the spring, you, we were talking about different options to finance it. Use buy, I mean, ha- have you updated, I haven't seen this either, so have, have you provided any of that information to the board? And, uh, you know, have you looked at possibly buying a demo truck? You know, do we have the same issue with a new ladder truck fitting into the firehouse that it, or does this truck, and ladder has to be customized?
The aerial bay itself is fine, the only issue.
That's gotta taller.
Yeah, the only issue we have in town is the eleven four bridge.
So the, some of the, some of the things, and I, I've been shopping around to see what's out there, you know, for short term and long term solutions to this. So right now, I've, I've been unsuccessful in finding a truck that will, A, fit under the bridge. B, um, as we said, while the, while our current apparatus bay height wise accommodates the truck we have. Um, lengthwise is still an issue because there's another truck that parks behind it, it's a, you know, double ended bay.
Right.
So I can't go any bigger lengthwise than what I have now. Um, and besides the bridge, I do still, you know, we're, we're in a somewhat of a rural setting. Where I deal with, you know, low tree limbs trying to get into people's driveways and so on. Anything that I've been able to find, you, you know, moderately used, either, you know, doesn't fit into one of those criteria.
Our current truck goes under that bridge?
Yes, the current one does. Um, and that's, quite honestly, that's why we.
It's a road feet or something.
And that's why the design of the apparatus is so important, so there's, there's two basic designs for a, for an aerial type vehicle. You have one where the, where the turntable assembly is mounted right behind the cab, where the ladder stretches back towards the back of the chassis. Which is what we have, and there's a rear mounted turntable where the ladder pivots off the back of the chassis. And it extends out over the front of the truck, but to do that, the overall travel height is significantly higher. Because the ladder bedded has to go over the top of the cab. So anything.
Where the la- the buck, buckets on the, below the.
Right, so anything rear mounted that I've found won't make it under the bridge, and we're gonna run into, uh, tree limbs and low overhangs. So operationally, a rear mounted truck isn't operationally friendly for our community.
Well, not to say that we don't have a lot of residential, and there's, the only thing that's really on the other side of the bridge is the town garage. And there is some commercial square.
Yeah.
But, I mean, can you go down, uh, National Road and?
Sure, so that's, that's the challenge is where we do, and, and, and yes, we can go that way. But the most, um, the most, the, the, the largest reason I have to go under that bridge is to go and get fuel. And the truck is too long to make that turn, so I have to go down to plantation. So, and like, you know, to give a. So Danbury's, uh, older ladder trucks were rear mounted, they couldn't go under the Lake Ave Bridge. They've switched to the mid mounted style so that now they can fit under the, the Lake Ave Bridge.
It's even lower, isn't it?
So, so for the height restriction, we're, we're limited to, we need a mid mounted aerial device.
All right, and again, I, I haven't looked at that information. How, how did we get at budget time last year, we were talking about one point three, and now, and now we're up to one point seven?
The, so the num- the, the prices that we get from the manufacturer initially are what they speculate. Until they sit down with us, they try to give you a worst case scenario. Um, through the process of sitting down with them and developing a set of specs where they see exactly what type of features you're looking for on the truck. And, you know, this being no different than the pumper that we just, uh, specked out, we're looking for a very basic vehicle. It's not gonna have a ton of chrome on it, it's not gonna have, you know, every bell and whistle, it's gonna have the, you know, the, the functions that we need to. You know, perform our duties at fire and rescue incidents, so, so once they see exactly what we're trying to build, they can give us a more, um. A closer estimate. So last year, the, the final estimate that we got from Seagrave for what we specked out on paper was one point five five. Um, the current, to take that same spec that we had then, and their estimate at this point after going through the whole process with this is one point six. Um, I.
Are you looking at other manufacturers, because, you know, I know you, you guys, I know. You, you, for the longest time, you were Sutfin, the other guys, the other side of town, they were Pierce. You know, I'm at the point of saying it's an automobile, it's an automobile, they all build good ones today.
Yeah, and, so we, um, you know, we attempted to standardize the fleet for a variety of reasons.
Sure, but we're not, we're not gaining anything.
For, since nineteen seventy-seven, we had very good luck with the Sutfin Tower. And, you know, seven or eight years ago when we started, uh, specking out Engine Five, we've, we've had good luck with Sutfin for a ladder truck. Will buy a pumper from them. Around that time, that's when, uh, the owner of this family business passed on, and it's, you know, not a. Not a customer friendly corporation to work with now, so, um, we elected to, to say, okay. If we can't standardize the fleet, then we need to go out and shop around and see what's best for, uh, for what we're trying to accomplish firefighting wise. So that's how we landed with, uh, with the Seagrave brand. Uh, their maintenance is done right over in Brewster, New York, uh, very easy access to get to them. They've made themselves very available to us on the sales and the service aspect.
Seagrave is who, uh, Stony Hill's been using for a while too, right?
Stony Hill's been using Pierce.
Oh, Pierce, right.
Both, you know, both reputable manufacturers, there's, you know, there's a ton of Seagraves out there, there's a ton of Pierces out there. You know, the, uh, the, the big thing with an aerial device is that every aerial device, you know, design has its own little, um. They put their own little spin on things, so trying to find, trying to find what can be built structurally. And, you know, taking into account approach angle on intersections, driveways, the height, the length, and what the truck can do. The, uh, you know, tactically at an incident scene, um, that's where we arrived with the Seagrave aerial scope is our recommendation. Because the truck that we have now tactically works very well in this town. So, you know, for us, there's really not a lot that we need to change with the type of truck we have. We just need to find a different manufacturer that makes something close to it, and that's what we found with the, the Seagrave aerial scope, uh, aerial.
Just, would you still consider taking a look at third and fourth parties? Uh, take a look at this existing piece of apparatus to see what kind of, uh, quotation you might get. For a total new ladder and new, uh, hydraulic system based upon new parts and them retrofitting it in.
To put it on the old truck, Paul?
I know, I, I, I understand seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, that's, that's not the point, the point, the point is, um, uh, you know. The town right now, and, and all of you are taxpayers, so you can understand this. With a new police station, with two new schools, uh, people are saying, let's keep this town affordable. I'm looking for perhaps an option, if it's an option, maybe it's not an option. Uh, you know, may, may, maybe it's. May, may, maybe it'll, soon as we get some sort of quotations, we'll just scrap it, throw it in a circular file and say, it's not an option.
The other, the other thing to consider, um, and, and this kinda comes into play because I believe it's this coming year. Uh, we're due for our, uh, for our ISO evaluation. And the, um, fire insurance rates are based on the town's ISO.
Sure.
Score, or, or based on their evaluation, so there's a variety of things that ISO looks at. They look at everything from a dispatch center to the, um, the water system in town, how much of your town has hydrants? And how much doesn't have hydrants, they look at the, uh, number of, uh, pumpers.
Right.
And aerial devices you have.
Total apparatus.
Thing that they take into consideration with that score is the, uh, the age, the maintenance and the compliance to. Uh, the NFPA standards. So what we've kinda gotten ourselves into with the, with this truck now, because of its age, is we're, we're in that. We're in that situation where they're, they're looking at us saying, you, you have a truck that doesn't comply with NFPA. And it's forty-two years old, they don't see the, you know, two thousand seven versus nineteen seventy-seven. They see nineteen seventy-seven red flags go up, so. What potentially would happen is if we try to, if we, if we were able to find a third party vendor that could acquire. A aerial device, I don't know that they'd be able to purchase that from the Sutfin Corporation. To then mount it themselves, but if they could, we get ourselves into this situation of, you know, down the road with our next evaluation. Okay, so now your truck is a, uh, is a two thousand seven, it's fifteen years old, it's twenty years old. So you're, you're constantly putting yourself in a situation where, you know, where, you know, every, the, the taxpayers pay long term based on higher insurance rates. So, you know, it, it, it's one of those things where, where cost is gonna be incurred either on the front end or on the back end. And where we wanna, where we wanna put it.
I would still like to see us have that in front of us, just to confirm, you know, this board right here, saying, okay. This is the best for the town long run, no question about it, I'm not denying you a truck, believe me.
I do have, um, the maintenance facility that does all my preventive maintenance on all my other vehicles. Um, uh, first line emergency services, uh, they've done very good work for us. And, you know, they do take on projects from time to time, I'll contact them tomorrow and see if that's something that. That A, would they be willing to look into it, and B, is it something that mechanically is feasible?
I'm, I agree with Paul and Rich simultaneously. Um, my wonder though is, knowing that we have to get another, a truck, and that's, that's gotta happen. And also knowing that as Stony Hill gets built out, the, the day is coming, there's gotta be another one up there. Uh, my interest in looking at the, the cost of refurbishing that with a new ladder is, would it make sense to have that as an emergency backup? That's, you know, so you, it doesn't go out on every call, but if you, if you've got apparatus that's out and you've got another call, it's used occasionally. So, that may, and like Paul said, that might, that might not make sense, it might just be, you, you get whatever you can for it and get it out of there. But I would like to explore that.
Okay, I can, uh, I can certainly make that phone call tomorrow, and, um, I'll see what I can find out on that front. And, uh, I'll let you know as soon as I can, uh, get an answer on that.
Now, with regard to other brands, you said, uh, Stony Hill, normally they, they run with Pierce?
Yeah, they, they've purchased Pierce, you know, for as long as I've been a firefighter in this town, a reputable company. There's a lot of them out there, they have a good reputation around the country.
Do, do they have service locally, the service center?
Have service through, uh, the Firematic, uh, company in, I believe Rocky Hill, which is, that's the local Pierce Service Center.
Okay.
So you know, the strange thing is, and I, I share your, your concern, I went on the internet and looked at, uh, used. You know, aerials, and I saw like a two thousand four, uh, I think it was Le France. A hundred foot for two hundred thousand dollars, and I says, what's wrong with it?
Now, with, with that said, I can tell you why it's that cheap. Uh, because somewhere elsewhere, I'm a firefighter, we have a ladder truck from that era. And, uh, it's a American of France, and American of France is a name that has been in business and out of business. Three or four times over the.
But there's several brands out there.
And they, um, the, so this particular truck, we're in the same situation where it's difficult to get parts. And there's no factory support because there's no longer an American of France factory. And that's one of the things that we've, that we're, we feel confident with the Seagrave brand, like I said, when we went to, to them for the pumper. Seagrave's been in business continuous in the United States since nineteen thirty-three. You know, they started out in Detroit and they've since moved to, uh, to, uh, Wisconsin. But, you know, they, they're a continuous running business, they've never had a, a break in service.
Who do they buy their engines from, Cum- Cummins Diesel?
Um, most fire truck manufacturers now are using Cummins, uh, Pierce will use a Cummins or a Detroit Diesel. Pretty much everybody else is using the, uh, the Cummins motor with a, with the Allison electronic transmission. And it's just one of those things that it's a, it's been a proven motor in, you know, in trucks all over. Whether it's a fire truck, a dump truck, a city bus, it's just a, uh, it's a, a, a well established company, and it's a combination that works. That's what most manufacturers are using now.
Okay, all right, all right, here, here's my opinion. You guys need a new truck, or, or, uh, maybe a, a demo, if you can go out and look at a demos, if there's any demos. I, I don't know if there are any out there.
The internet every day looking.
Okay, so that's.
I would love to be able to come to you guys and say, hey, I found something that we can get. I, I would love to be able to come to you guys and say, hey, I found something that we can get a really good deal on that'll meet our needs.
All right, so that would be number one. Number two is look at other brands of trucks, and I know you, you're set on the Seagrave, but what is, what is the difference of, of prices for some of these other brands? I mean, are we talking fifty thousand or are we talking two hundred thousand? You know, if we're talking fifty thousands, that's peanuts when you're talking one point seven.
Mounted, uh, aerial device with a bucket on it to replace, you know, replacing with a, you know, so, vehicle similar to what we have now. I've shopped around with four different manufacturers over the past year, year and a half, and they're all right around the same price. And, and emergency one, uh, manufactured vehicle is one point five. A, uh, Pierce mid-mount tower is one point five five-ish, depending on what features you put on it. A, uh, Seagrave aerial scope right now is one point six.
All right, is, is any of those numbers in, in this literature here that you dropped off at the office?
The other manufacturers, no.
All right, and, and we're gonna need that for future references, all right? So that would be, I mean, you guys got to do a little homework, you know, and, and I think we can do some homework here. The other option is, uh, when you came before, again, as I mentioned before, a bunch of the time, you know, uh, leasing, uh, uh, payment plans and, and things like that. You know, we, we need that information again and updated.
I do have some of that information here with the newest, uh, rates and, um, so, and actually, so the comparison prices, I can, I can, I'll go about that two different ways so that we, you know, so that we have, so that we see it from both sides. Now that the town is on the HGAC purchasing program, which we use to buy the pumper.
That's the Houston Galveston one.
Right, we can get the same type of pricing, no matter what manufacturer we buy. We can get the same pricing, so it eliminates the, the bidding wars between manufacturers and so on. So you're getting a, you know, national fair market price. So I can go on that website and print out some, some basic numbers for you. What you don't get with those numbers is the, uh, the tool mounting, the, uh, the lettering, the, you know, the, the add-ons after the truck itself is built. So you'll see those numbers are a bit lower because that is for the shell of the vehicle.
Well, you can give her a lot, you can give this a lot, but you gotta do that with any truck.
Right.
Yeah, radio installation.
You know, I, I can talk to the, the sales reps from, from those four, you know, Suffin being the fourth one. I'm not interested in doing business with them anymore, but I can certainly call them and, and get an estimate on the price. But basically the, the four manufacturers that make something similar to what we have now, they're very close in price. Any, any aerial device in this day and age, you, you're, you're looking at over a million dollars, you know, it's.
So I, I can't see putting seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars on, on that old chassis. And you gotta refurbish everything but the engine and transmission and drivetrain.
And they're already eleven years old.
The other thing, the other thing that we talked about, uh, at the beginning of the year, so this is the most current pricing that we got from, uh, the leasing two company, which is the, it's a government leasing program that, um, it's like a, it's like a lease to buy. So you, your vehicle wants it paid for, but you can finance it with, you know, however much money you wanna put down and then finance it over two years up to fifteen years. And, um, so you can see what the, what the rates are. We contacted them three weeks ago and got that information from them, so that's all up to date right there pertaining to the Seagrave brand. I can get the same thing for the other manufacturers, so you have a comparison.
Ask Bob to look at this and compare it to the bonding and stuff.
Can, can you, do you have this in email form too?
Yeah, I can forward it to you.
Send it to, send it to me and Bob Kozlowski.
Sure.
And, uh, oh, actually, send it, send it to Dan so she can share with all, all, all three of us.
All three of us, plus Bob, plus Brad, anybody else?
Sure.
Well, you know, it comes down to now, my famous question is, what do we do with that old truck? To me, it's, it's useless, there's no money in it.
So this is, this is what, a lot of apparatus fall into this situation of they're too old for another department to wanna buy to use it as a frontline piece or as a spare. Some departments might wanna buy it as a spare to use it that, you know, that one week out of the year when their truck is out for service. And they're not old enough for a collector to wanna buy them. You know, if, you know, if you had an apparatus from the seventies or older, there's collectors that'll pay good money for it. But, you know, we fall into that, that uneasy, uh, age where there's just no market for them. We might be able to, uh, sell it through a fire apparatus wholesaler that'll, you know, sell it to somebody that has a similar truck that wants to harvest part, the, the good parts off of it. Or they might have the parts that this truck needs and the rest of their truck is failing. And between the two trucks, they can make one, you know, tho- those are options, but.
Is any idea what the truck might be worth?
What's that?
Any idea what the truck might be worth?
So this is the best I can come up with and it's not pretty. So we, uh, we spoke in length with Harrison, New York, uh, back towards the end of, uh, twenty eighteen because they had a Suffin Tower just like ours, it was a little bit newer, it was a two thousand one through and through. And they ran into the same problems dealing with Suffin that we were. Maintenance issues, communication, all kinds of problems, and their truck was due to be replaced. So they switched to air, the Seagrave aerial scope. So when we test drove theirs and, you know, did all kinds of, you know, tests to see, we'll do this the way we need it, we'll do that the way we need it. Had a long conversation with their chief, you know, what happened with your old Suffin, what did you do with it? He said that when they talked to the Suffin Corporation about it and said, would you take it on trade? And they offered them a ridiculously low number. If they said, well, it's not old, it, it, it's not old enough for a collector to want it and it's too old for anybody to use it and it's really not worth anything to us as the manufacturer. It ended up getting sold privately through a, uh, fire truck wholesaler, um, for, I believe it was eighteen thousand dollars. It's, you know, that's the problem with the fire apparatus, it depreciates and it's, you know, because of the.
Probably took the ladder off, the chassis is worth more than if they have the ladder on.
Scrap metal might be worth more.
Yeah.
The last couple of, of updates to the NFPA standards covering how a fire truck is built has changed so much of, um, the vehicle having to be computerized and, you know, safety's built in that it's really hard to take an old truck and make it new, so there's not really a market for it now.
You know, I'm, I'm all for safety, but what are the chances there are manufacturers that sit on the NFPA board?
That's where, that's where most of your standards come from.
Yeah, I know.
Because they say.
And they keep going up every time we talk about this.
Okay, so this happens, how can we change the sign of a fire truck to prevent this from happening?
Okay.
And they're the ones that come up with all these things. And, and it really, it, it, it puts all, all of you and all of us in these uneasy situations, you know? Cause the problem with NFPA is it's not a, NFPA is not a law in the state of Connecticut. In some states it is.
It's a standard, yeah.
It's a, it's a consensus standard.
Yeah.
But being that it's a nationally accepted consensus standard, in the court of law, you're compared to it. So, you know, if there was a, an accident or a truck malfunctioned or, you know, somebody died as a result, lawyers don't know the fire service inside and out, so they look at NFPA because it's this nationally accepted standard. And even though Connecticut's not bound to follow it, there's other states that are, so it turns into, well, you knew that this standard was in place, why didn't you follow it?
Yeah. Well, um, I, I think you guys have your, your homework. I, I, I doubt that we're gonna wanna keep the old one even for a backup, that we would, we would need a quote on refurbishing that.
Okay.
We need you to submit the full technical specs of what, what you're looking for, I don't know if that's in here or not.
That's not in that, I can get that for you.
Okay, so we, you know, cause we, we do, we may need to go do a bid process, but we would also need to know, um, the, uh, the HG group or any other co-op.
Right.
Cooperative arrangements, but the full, full, full technical specs, even if we needed to put it out. We, I mean, we really do have to show the taxpayers that we're doing our due diligence. And then, uh, the leasing or other types of payment plans.
Sure.
So get that to us so we can, we can move this along. And then last but not least, just keep, keep trolling, looking for demos. I mean, the, the, the problem we have is that, you know, we, we knew that this truck needed to be replaced. You know, we didn't, we didn't deal with it in the, during the budget. I, I mean, personally, I thought we still had some time to deal with that because these things come up kind of on a long range thing. This thing has gotten bad in a hurry and has left you guys in a lurch. And the lead time, like if we had a referendum next week and, and, and approved this truck, it's gonna take close to a year before you see it. And you're gonna need something.
Right.
So, I mean, uh, I, I'm, I'm hoping that we get lucky and somebody ordered what you need and they say, oh. Our agency just went out of business, we, we're not, we don't want this anymore.
And that does pop up from time to time, Fairfield got theirs that way.
If, I mean, we, we, we can, you know, we can move this along fast if an opportunity comes up. I mean, if it, e- even if you had an opportunity, it's bound to be over a million dollars. We'd have to go through the, the, uh, the, the bit to, uh, yeah, but maybe we could have a, like an emergency town meeting to approve a deposit or something that's below that, while we go through the process.
Right.
So, you know, I, cause I, our, our goal is to get you guys back in business and not have to, not have to be sitting there, you know, tinkering with a truck that doesn't work for a whole year, you know, because that's what we're looking at.
Challenge that we're working with now is, you know, we don't have, because obviously there is a mechanical problem with the truck. But the fact that we don't have a certificate that it's been inspected.
Sure.
For this year because of those problems.
Yeah.
I can't fly that aerial device, um, but we're still sending the truck because of the other equipment that it carries.
Yeah.
So now I have to send the truck there so that we have the saws and the fans and the cantladders and everything. But I need to position it out of the way so that when the mutual aid ladder truck arrives, there's still room for it. Obviously there's lead time built into, built into that. We're adding ten to fifteen minutes if a mutual aid truck was available when I needed it. They're arriving, you know, so late into the game that it's really impossible to get them positioned in a spot where I can effectively use them.
Of course. How fast could you get that information to us?
Uh, I will, I, I will contact our, um, our service center up in, uh, in Pramo to see what his feeling is on doing that, uh, that ladder replacement project. And then the, um, the information from, uh, Seagrave, Pierce and E-one for the prices for other vehicles, I should be able to have that within a couple of days.
Okay, uh, uh, in terms of priority, I think, look, you know, uh, price, specs on a new truck and then opportunity pricing, if, if anything, if we get lucky is the priority, cause I don't, I don't personally see, you know, like Rich says, I don't personally see that thing being used as a, even as a backup, but, you know, it's something to consider.
Right.
But that's not the priority, get, you know, getting, getting a newer, uh, up to, fully up to code replacement is the priority, so.
All right.
If you can get that to us.
I'll work on that tomorrow and I'll be in touch as soon as I, at least for the most part, I should be able to have those numbers within a couple of days.
Okay, well, we don't have another, it's likely a meeting for a couple of weeks, so, you know, you're gonna have to stay up till three in the morning doing it, so.
All right.
All right.
You know, like I said, you know, it's, we don't wanna deny you anything like that, believe me. I'm just, we, the three of us here just take a look at bottom line a little bit. I, I think that's what the, that's what the residents really expect of us.
It's not only your departments, you know, the rest of the departments in town that we have to deal with.
I totally understand.
We're all taxpayers here, you know?
Right.
You know, you gotta, you gotta look for the best deal.
I understand that, and, and with that said, I mean, you know, that's, we're, we're trying to provide the best to the ta- to the town as well. Because our bottom line, when they look at us on their worst day is that we can provide services that they need when they call nine-one-one. So that, you know, you know, so we're trying to, we're all trying to look out for what's best for the town.
I'm gonna throw something.
Of course, we know.
Throw something out at you that I've been thinking about, is that bridge. Uh, you know, we're, we're, we're really hamstrung because of that bridge, because your building will accept just about anything for that bay, roughly, okay? Has there been any, uh, legal things done by fire departments that you know of, have told railroads or, you know, uh, uh, the state?
That's DOT, yeah.
Or DOT say, this is unsafe for the community, it's not, we cannot work under.
And, and, you know, this is before I was, this is before I was so high in the pecking order when that bridge was replaced. And I don't remember the specifics of it, but I do know that, you know, concern was voiced on behalf of us that, you know, trying to get equipment under there. You know, all my fire trucks right now fit under that bridge, but mutual aid apparatus from, you know, anywhere south of us might not fit under there, so it is a concern. Case in point, the Francis J. Clark Park Fire, when we had to bring in mutual aid tankers, one of our ideal fill sites to refill those tankers couldn't be used because half of the tankers that were there wouldn't fit under that bridge. So it was communicated by the fire department, um, to some authority at that time when there was consideration for raising the bridge. But, you know, most, most communities that have these, you know, low access issues, they end up having a spec out apparatus that'll.
Well, I've seen Newtown where the, the Newtown Bridge, if you recall, that was low until, until they decided to excavate. And, uh, now, now it's a, a, a normal underpass.
Right. The problem is there, excavate, you're in swamp, yeah.
Yeah, oh, there, yeah. But I think they did scrape the road down a little bit.
Then you require really a pumping system for that area.
Yeah.
I understand. Your truck fit under there.
I remember Redding complained a lot that they didn't want the truck traffic going down.
Too bad.
Right.
Well, I, I know, but they were involved in it.
And the funny part about that is all those trucks just go down Nashville Road and drive right down to Redding anyway.
Yeah, that's exactly what they do. Well, uh, we do have a new commissioner of the, the State Department of Transportation, uh, Mr. Gil- Gilletti. I, I will be meeting with him sometime in the next month and, uh, you know, Mr. Reddiker said, I said, what are the, uh, when I first met him ten years ago, I said, what are the chances we could get that bridge changed? And he said, not, uh, not in our lifetime, but we got a new, new person. The problem is, the reason there was an opportunity is that if you raise that bridge, you have to raise the grade of the track a mile in each direction. Because you, you know, the, the local marshes can't pull. So it's, it's not just the bridge, it's, it's, it's a big deal, so, uh, but it does, it never hurts to have the conversation.
Sure.
So, um, any of you guys have any other questions?
Wouldn't hurt in the information on the, uh, cab mounted turntable, what, what the height is.
Right, and that's actually something that we find that varies between manufacturers. So I, you know, I can't remember the specific height, you know, ground to turntable. The Seagrave aerial scope is the lowest of all of our options, which does keep that travel height significantly lower. But, yeah, I can, uh, I'll, I'll get, print out some of those for you.
Well, it might be in for, in case we can't get the bridge raised.
You never know. You all live to be a hundred and fifty, who knows?
I always remember the funny story, I was talking to, uh, the chief of, uh, Danbury Fire Department about four or five years ago. And, uh, apparently there was a couple U-Haul trucks. And he says, and he says, uh, the story goes that U-Haul is, don't go that way because you can't get it. So, coming back home, bam, you know, so, well, you didn't tell me I couldn't go the other way.
That is absolutely true. That was, that was a person who was moving their kids into college, in West Con. And they blamed it, they blamed it on the U-Haul guy, and said, you didn't tell me I couldn't come the other way.
Yeah.
I saw a picture of that truck.
When, uh, Dolan first got front end loader, uh, cement trucks.
Yeah.
They drove into the bridge with one of those.
Just there.
The guy said, well, my old mixer went under and the new mixer didn't go.
Remember that, the barrel went out on one truck and the cabin chassis went out on the other one truck. It was a front door. Yeah.
All right, so you guys have any other questions? All right, well, that completes, thank you very much, guys.
Thank you, guys.
You know, um, Brendan was here for a while, so it actually took six of you to sell a fire truck. But, uh, so I entertain a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Second.
All right, those in favor?
Aye.
All right, thank you, Harrison, thank you again for coming out.
Thank you.
Appreciate it. Yeah, this is the, uh, my loan in Brown Parks.
Paul, you didn't make it to our wet down, I wanna thank you for the support of the new engine.
Oh, yeah.
And we had coins made up for you.
Thank you.